Okay, there are copies of the agenda available out there with Sarah somewhere. Please help your left to that. This meeting, we're not going to zoom it, but we are videotaping it and we'll post it on the website within the next few days. Especially because of the AC, which I want to keep on as much as I can at the meeting. Those presenters would like you to use the podium, all right? And if you're making a comment from the audience, please speak up, all right? As far as protocol, we are not mandating masks, but the reason we came to the firehouse is so we can all socially distance, so please keep that in mind. Masks are optional for those who aren't vaccinated, but it's totally your case, there's no mandate for that. So I guess, Sarah, could you do a roll call for the trustees? Everybody's mic is on?
Mine is.
Here, Al.
Here.
Jennifer, you may raise your hand.
Here.
Trustee Nancy, no. After it. Trustee Erica, yes. And trustee Andrew.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We'll start off with some administrative business. The first is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Have the trustees had a chance to review the minutes that Sarah sent out about three minutes ago?
Not really, to be honest.
Have you?
Yeah.
You haven't?
No, I haven't.
All right, so we won't have a forum to accept the minutes, so we'll hold it off until the next meeting.
If that's not a problem, sorry.
No, that's not. All right, okay, we'll hold off on the minutes. Vouchers, okay, the vouchers are broken up into two parts. One is the vouchers that are for the prior fiscal year, fiscal year 2020 to 2021, and we had a total of $15,045 submitted for trustee approval from the last fiscal year, since our last meeting. That's $3,748 from the general fund, $82.90 for the water fund, and $6,190 from the sewer fund. Now, what I want to do is I want to ask for a motion, I want to make a motion, to close the fiscal year for 2020, 2021. The reason is because we have to provide to the New York State Comptroller's Office every year an annual update document, AUD it's called, okay? And so for that work to be done by Sarah and Karen, they need to get moving, and therefore I want to cut off all subsequent invoices that are posted from last year and have used funds from this year's budget to pay those. Assuming, of course, that there are very few amounts of those still coming. So I'll make a motion that we close the fiscal year 2020, 2021 effective today. Can I get a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion passes. And by the way, just to say that how we did for the budget for the year, I'm still very happy with how we did even though we picked up additional expenditures. The money for the water fund was primarily because of the two water leaks we had in the past month. And so we have to pay, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about paying that money, but that still kept the water fund under budget by $59,000 for the year, and the sewer fund under budget by $56,000 for the year. So I'm very happy with the performance of the water and sewer fund as VRI managed it. And as far as the general fund, even with the submissions for this period, we still were in the black by $25,000. And you can see that from the operating expense reports that are posted on the website. Right now, there are two operating expense reports, one for last fiscal year and one for this fiscal year. So are there any questions about the vouchers for the last fiscal year?
No, I'm fine.
Anybody in the audience have a question or comment? Okay, we'll move on then for the vouchers for this fiscal year, which covers only June and July. And so for the general fund, there's $136,677 for the general fund and vouchers. The Bedrock well account, $2,950. The water fund, $36,854, and sewer fund, $25,174, for a total of $201,656. Any questions or comments about the vouchers for the current fiscal year? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? I know that the department has received their detailed reports from Nicole. There was an update to what you got, Ted, I don't know if you saw that?
Yes, I saw the site. I didn't actually read it.
Okay, good. You're in good shape, though.
Okay.
Okay, then.
May I? Just, on the one that I have here, unless I missed something, my total for the vouchers says 191, as opposed to...
Yeah. Yeah, the 191 reflects the fact that there was a $10,000 overcharge to the fire department's insurance.
Got it.
It was an accident, Nicole sent out an email catching that and updating the reports.
Okay.
All right. So that's what, the reports you're going to see is 191,000.
Right.
Okay. Any questions about the vouchers, then? So can I get a motion to accept the vouchers for the current fiscal year?
A motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, before we get to the department reports, there are just two things on my mind before I have Deirdre come up here. One of them is, I still need from the fire department and from the police department the updated license plate numbers and all that kind of information for anybody you've got that's driving a car or a vehicle, okay? So can I get that from you guys this month?
Yes.
Okay? Officer Kelly?
Your personal?
This is, yeah, it's your, it's your license plate number, well, there's a matrix.
My name?
Yeah. It's this chart here.
Okay.
Date of birth, marital status, and driver's license. This is for insurance, okay? Because they want to keep track of who in the village is driving village vehicles. So I need to get that from you.
I'll leave you with one license number, I'll let you determine your name.
Great, thanks. The second thing I need from you all is a response to the audit that was done by, the safety audit that was done. We got a report by, who is it in Dutchess County that does those audits?
It was, I have, I have a first name but not a last name, so I just...
Elsa, yeah.
Elsa, yeah.
So, you know, the audit that we had done, I need to have a written response from you. Bobby, you gave me a verbal, just give me the notes with what you said about what you did to correct the action items. And I did the same things from the fire department and from water and sewer. Scott's not here tonight. It wasn't much, but I just want to make sure we get closure on those things, just so I can, you know, have a response back to their audit findings. And just one final note, that we are planning to have all future board meetings here at the, at the firehouse. I'm working with Matt on the schedules. He says there's a couple of Wednesdays, second Wednesdays of the month, it might be a conflict. And so we'll work around his schedule to do whatever we can, but given the need to socially distance versus the village hall, this is really an opportune place for us, so we're planning to do this permanently, okay?
The two rooms, I don't think there's anything you can't work around, because we can apply it so that there's another function you can use the other half.
Great, okay, so I appreciate the firehouse helping us here.
Obviously, the boost experience can be an issue if you're recording.
Yeah.
But if we can get the AC on, on let back, and we need to turn on earlier in the day, the temperature down to, you know, the low seventies, and then turn it off when we need to...
Yeah, and hopefully the next two meetings won't be, you know, mid eighties when we're having the meetings, so that'll help, too. Okay, any questions about that? No?
No, we're good.
Okay, so Deirdre's come, legislator from the Dutchess County Assembly is going to give us an update. Just verify that your speaker's on there, Deirdre, before you start talking.
Her mic's on.
Okay, great.
It's on, I think. Deirdre Houston, Dutchess County legislator. So I just wanted to come tonight to talk about ARP funds. As most people are aware, the county has received some American Rescue funds, planned funds, and as a county, we've decided that, we think that, the youth of the county have been greatly impacted by COVID, and yet haven't necessarily reaped some of the benefits. Now, obviously, towns and municipalities and villages are going to get some ARP funds directly, and school districts are going to get some ARP funds directly, but our primary concern was that non-for-profits, especially for the youth, did not have the opportunity to fundraise for the last 17, 18 months. So we have set aside $3.1 million of our ARP funds, and it is specially targeted for nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s for youth, in the sense that sports teams for youth, theater for youth, arts for youth, and any libraries can apply for these funds. We really want it to be a one-time item, not like a program that requires annual funding because obviously we're not going to get the ARP funds annually, but a one-time expense. Say, you know, the Northern Dutchess Raiders needed new helmets, and they couldn't afford to fundraise or have the opportunity to fundraise for new helmets. They could apply for this grant money. It's a very simple grant, it's on the Dutchess County website, where people can reach out to me and I can help them through it. It's a one-page, simple grant, and we're just asking for, of course, pictures and any invoices upon completion to prove that the project was done. But it's a really, it's non-oonerous grant application, it's simple, anyone that knows, anybody in a library, a 501(c)(3) targeting youth, theater camps, anything like that, please encourage them to apply. The money is there, it's going to be on a rolling basis, so there's no grant deadline. So obviously, the money is 3.1 million, so the quicker you apply, the more opportunity you're going to have to receive some of those funds. So it's a great opportunity, and I just want to encourage and get the word out that people should look into that.
Very good.
And the only, the second thing I want to just gently remind you guys of is, you know, the marijuana law. By December 31st, you have to opt out if you so choose. You're automatically opted in on a state. So it's, you can read the law, and I can help you with it if you need it, but it's a state law, and by December 31st, you have to opt out, otherwise you're automatically in. So just something you guys should get up on and read on.
What does it mean if you opt in, or by...
So the new marijuana laws, to my, to my knowledge, obviously your attorney would know more about than I do, it's a state law, but it's in fact about having a dispensary in your village or town, and how it can be grown in your village and town. There's, there's some exemptions for agriculture, and obviously some personal exemptions, as far as a person can own so many plants and grow so many plants, but there is discussion of, if the town, if the village did not want a dispensary in the village, they would in fact have to opt out, and the deadline for that is December 31st. So it's just a gentle reminder, as I've, all the towns and villages I represent, I'm just reminding them because we're at the six-month mark, and so it's an important time to, you know, it takes a while to get these things done, so with your, I think you have a two-month requirement for local laws, so I just think it's important to keep it in your, front of your brain.
So the village could opt out of allowing a dispensary in the village?
Correct. Otherwise, you're automatically in.
So otherwise, someone could come and set up a shop here to sell marijuana?
Well, I'm sure they would still have to go through the planning board and the local ordinance laws, as far as it pertains to our local laws, but yes, you would not be able to prohibit them from opening specifically a dispensary unless you've opted out of the law, is my understanding. Again, I can get you a copy of the law and just, and just send it on to you via email.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, that'd be great.
That's fine, I'll get it for you, I have it in my email, actually, and I'll just forward it along to you and the rest of your board, just so that you're aware of it and, and you can just...
Is the opt-out a big deal, what's the requirement?
I think it's a local law.
A local law?
I think it's a local law or a resolution, I'm not sure how...
So it requires a public hearing and all the associated things with the local law, right?
Well, any local law would require a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
And, or it may be a simple resolution, you have to look at the law.
Okay. So what do you think about that?
I think we should, I think we have to discuss it and do it by resolution and have a discussion with all five of us here. You know, three of us here is not really a good time to discuss it.
Okay, what do you think?
I agree, I think you need to look into the law, kind of go through it before we decide anything.
Okay. Any comments from the public about that? NDA, have an opinion?
I'm spending our time here.
Huh?
Pleasant Valley.
Oh, is that right, okay.
It's actually not a dispensary in Pleasant Valley, it's like a vape shop selling CBD oils and things like that, but marijuana is not legal to sell in New York State yet, it's actually not a dispensary.
Oh, is that right, okay.
Correct. So I'll fold you guys the law, but I just wanted to mention it so that it didn't get...
Okay, blot that up, that's good.
Yep, okay, any questions for me?
No. Any general questions for Deirdre Washington?
We discussed our question.
We discussed our question already, and you're going to give me information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Kevin?
We launched our, we launched our, I feel, the building, we have that time to get it to the, 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 to the,
Questions from the audience for Ted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Officer Kelly is here for Officer in Charge Witt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In the month of June, the police department had 131 incidents. We did seven traffic tickets, eight parking tickets, four property damage auto accidents, 10 vehicle and traffic complaints, one parking complaint, one disabled vehicle, and three road hazards. For assist other agencies, we assisted the state police seven times, the sheriff's office twice, the fire department six times, EMS 20 times, Town of Washington Court twice, and the Millbrook Central School District three times. We had criminal activity, we had one arrest, one domestic incident, four disorderly conducts, four harassments, one criminal trespass, and one order of protection. And for community service, we had two suspicious activities, assisted citizens three times, did four house checks, three property checks, four burglar alarms, five lost and found properties, one lockout, 11 records requests, one civil matter, eight animal complaints, two mental health calls, two noise complaints, one unattended child, one welfare check, two explosions heard, and we assisted the St. Joseph's Church with their Eucharist walk through the village. And Sergeant Witt asked me to just let everybody know that the new car is on the road and we're driving it. The old car has been taken out of service as of the new car being on, but it still has to be disassembled. He just needs to have an appointment with the person who takes it apart.
Okay, and we want to get that off the insurance as soon as possible.
Right.
But as appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, it's out of service, so it's just parked for now. We're not using it at all.
So can you explain the DC Sheriff's Office assist? What was going on there? Usually they're not...
Sometimes they win a poll on a call, and sometimes the state police does, sometimes the sheriffs do. Depends who's closest, who's the closest unit, so...
Oh, okay.
They're in the village a lot more now. There's a few that are here all the time.
Was that because of the school?
No, they're just, they're all assigned different areas.
Oh, okay.
So I know that some of the, one of the sheriffs that is assigned to Millbrook, he also goes to like Stamfordville, Pleasant Valley. So wherever he is in the county when the call goes out, he may win the poll, or a trooper may win it.
I see, okay.
Or we might if it's in the village.
All right, fine. Any questions regarding the data that Officer Kelly has shown?
No, I'm fine.
No?
No.
All right, so one question that came up last meeting is there's a difference between the employee handbook and what's been practiced in terms of reimbursing officers who cover holidays. The handbook says specifically about half of the holidays, officers receive time and a half coverage, the other half they don't, all right? But prior administrations have paid that time and a half for all holidays. Now, there was a question from one of the trustees asking to verify that that's the case, and I had McCall go back a couple of years and showed me proof that that's been the case. So given that, and given the difficulty we have getting officers to cover those shifts, I would like to change the employee handbook to make sure that officers are given, what do you call it, time and a half time? It's a...
Time and a half.
Time and a half time. And we want it for the actual holiday. So therefore, for example, Juneteenth, we just celebrated, it fell on a Saturday, we took it on the Friday. The movement would be that we would pay time and a half on the Saturday, not the Friday. Okay? And so there's a few holidays like Columbus Day, President's Day, in which the actual holiday doesn't necessarily fall on the day that we give it as, you know, to the employees. So the change would be to make it time and a half pay for the actual day that it occurs on, not the day that the rest of the people take off. Okay? And that's what we agreed to do, right? So is there any discussion about that from the trustees?
No, I'm happy to see the handbook reflect accurately what's been going on by policy.
Yeah, the problem is it doesn't right now, but we're going to get there.
Yeah, so I think that's, you know, that's something we have to do, and that's fine.
Okay.
I agree.
You okay with that?
Yep.
So I'd like to make the motion that we update the employee handbook to reflect that officers will receive time and a half pay on all 13 of the holidays on the day of the holiday. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll update the wording in the handbook. Run it by the trustees and make sure everyone agrees with it, and Officer Witt. And then if everyone's okay, then we're just going to make that change and update the website. Okay? So, let's see, what else we got here? I had a discussion with Officer Witt and Officer Kelly about issues we have in covering days, day shifts, when Officer Witt has vacation, or a holiday, or his personal business, or sickness. Okay, so we have five part-time officers, right? All of them, I think, have additional jobs. I think that's true, right? So they're pretty much tuned towards being able to cover nights and weekends. So when Officer Witt, who's primarily a first shift officer, which I wanted him to be here on first shift, when he's out, we have difficulty getting people who are already on the force covering those shifts. So what I want to propose is that I go off with Officer Witt and seek to find an additional officer that we could hire that has specific qualifications, that is available to work days and weekends and nights as required. Okay? And the wording in the contract is going to be something specific like that. If you can't work days, you know, if you go, if you take this job and go off and get a job, a daytime job, now you can't work days. That's a condition of employment, in my mind. So if we can find somebody that meets those qualifications, I'd like to bring back to the board a request to hire a sixth part-time officer. What do you think about that?
I think a practical solution. Yeah. Explore that, because I know it's not just, it's not just the availability, because people have shifts in other areas, but there is also a situation where they might be able to get time off from that other duty, except the other duty is paying considerably more for the same time, and it's unfair to ask them to give up a significant amount of salary to help us out, so to speak, without, you know, without trying to deal with it in a kind of more, more, you know, an easier manner, let's put it that way.
Right. Any thoughts on that, any opinion?
I mean, I agree that it's needed. I wonder how feasible it is going to be to find this person with that kind of stipulation in there, but...
You're right. And by the way, I'm not happy about having this conversation anyway, because we just hired somebody a few years ago with that stipulation not written down. So this time it's going to be written down, with Ian's help, by the way. And then he went off and got a full-time job. So, so anyway, I've got the board's permission to go pursue that. May never come back with somebody, by the way, but I will try my best working with Officer Witt, okay?
That was also my stipulation, just FYI.
Your what?
That I, that was one of my stipulations as well when I was hired.
Or was?
Yes.
But verbal, probably.
Yes. I still cover the days, so...
I'm done with verbal.
Yeah.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda for the police is speed signs. So I sent out some flyers to the trustees, which had a proposal for speed signs, and I wanted Officer Kelly to describe to us what those are, how they would work, and of course, how much they would cost.
I don't know the cost.
For $5,500. Go ahead, I got that.
So they just, it's a sign that you can move, they're mobile, they're not something you move every day, you leave it for, you know, several months, and it tracks data of how fast people are going, and it'll flash, you know, if the speed limit's 30 and you're doing 45, it'll flash that you're, so that you know that you're speeding. It's not, it's good for people to see that they are going fast, because a lot of the people that I pull over on ticket always say, "Oh, I didn't know how, what the speed limit was," but that's not an excuse to break the law, obviously. But it does hinder people, because a lot of people think that when they see that, that there's a cop right there ready to write them a ticket. And sometimes we are, and sometimes we're not, but it does keep people, it slows them down for the most part. It's, I don't, I don't believe that they are calibrated, so I couldn't sit and look at one and say, "Oh, that guy's doing 47, I'm going to write him a ticket." We have to use the calibrated radar that's calibrated by the state.
Okay.
But it is good information, and we can see how many people are speeding, so that we know to use more of our time in those locations for traffic and radar.
Yeah, by the way, these do keep track of speeds as vehicles pass. All right, so there's a...
There are some hotspots in the village that we know about, but if it's moved to a different spot, it might be something that we didn't know was a problem. We do have our regular spots that we usually find speeders, like obviously Franklin Avenue, that's a big one. Nine Partners is a big one, 82 and 343. But, you know, some of the side roads, I know Harts Village Road is an issue sometimes. We do sit there a lot. But it's, it's good to collect the data, because the other, on the other hand as well, sometimes people think there's a lot of people speeding past their house, and it may not be.
Sure.
You can say, "Look, they're not really speeding, and we've been sitting here and there's no one to ticket," so it's good on both sides.
How mobile are they? How easy is it to move them?
I don't know which model you were looking at, but I believe that they come with a trailer hitch, and you just pull it on a trailer. It has wheels on it. If it's the one that the sheriff's office has, I'm not sure which sign you guys are looking at.
Oh, no, it's this, um... Did I bring the flyer? I didn't bring the flyer. It's this.
It would depend on how they're put up, I'm not, I'm not...
All right, well, go back and, can you find that out?
I can, yeah. I know, I know I spoke to Jared about it, and he said they were mobile, but it's, it's going to take something to move it, so...
Yeah, actually, I want to know, is it mobile that you guys can do it, or is it mobile because we need Bob to come?
It's not a tow, not from this photo.
The tow ones are easy.
No, it's not a tow one.
I'm, I don't, I'm not familiar with that model.
This is, this is one that looks like it almost goes on like a telephone pole or something. Permanent one?
But I don't know if it screws, and you can just unscrew it and wrap it back. I'm not familiar with the model, but I'll ask Jared to look into it for you.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Now, I guess the question of the board is... Okay, Sarah. Thanks, I'll go outside. So the question of the board is, what do you think about the idea?
I think, I think, I think I agree with having it and try it and try it at this point. You know, I usually take the recommendations by Officer Jared very seriously, and if you think it's going to cut down on the speeding, we can try it. In terms of it, this is not, it's not, it's not in his budget as far as I'm aware, so is this going to be a problem, because it's not something...
No, I'd like to use either money from the combined trust funds, because this is something to improve the quality of the village.
Okay.
Or we have money from the Thorn Foundation that we could use. So I, I would like to propose, if we accept doing it, that we use money that's not part of his budget.
Okay, all right.
And there's a couple options we've got there. Actually, there's even, you know, the American Rescue Fund's money could be considered too. All right? So I'd really like your opinion on whether you think it's a good idea for us to pursue before we buy, just in general, other than the funding.
I think it would be a good idea to have it at this point, and, and, you know, especially, especially to see if we, the only way we're going to find out, and we've tried this in the past on a temporary basis, if we see a significant difference, is to have it for a significant amount of time. We've, we've had it for a week in a few locations, but a couple of days in one spot does not necessarily give you a good handle on exactly long-term if it's going to be a good or bad, have a good or bad impact.
I tell you, me personally, they make a big difference, because if I see one, right away I get sensitive to it, and even the next week when they're gone, I'm still thinking about, it's there.
Yeah.
Checking my speedometer to see what's going on.
And I also, even before I was in law enforcement, anytime I saw one, I'm like, "Oh."
Yeah.
You know, it just makes you think, and sometimes you don't realize how fast you're going.
That's right.
You might not realize you're pulling into where the park is, where all the children are crossing the street, or coming down Franklin where there's people walking in the crosswalks. You might not realize that you're going so fast sometimes, because people get distracted.
Leslie, your thoughts?
I think it's got to be one that moves. I think if it's one that stays in the same place forever, people are just going to be, it's going to become part of their life, and they're going to ignore it.
Good point. Okay. How much? 30? What are you talking about, on the trailers? Well...
That's what the state toll makes, so be careful with it.
Oh, okay.
But these are, these look like they just mount on a pole.
Okay, well, let's see if those are things we can move the pole or something like that.
It's a universal pound in traffic, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm sure it could be, it's a solar powered, so...
Oh, solar powered, okay.
20 pounds, and you can move it a bit different.
All right, so you and Officer Witt will investigate that and let me know what you want to do, and I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
I just, what's the audience think? Any comments from the public?
It's like the speed limit sign.
Yeah. But it tells you what you're doing, as opposed to...
You're mounting somewhere.
Yeah.
But if you're not, if you're not speeding, it just shows your speed, but if you're speeding, it's like, you know, it's like when I sit on Franklin Avenue and I hit the switch because they're going a little bit too fast, and I give them the arm out the window, and they're like, "Oh," some people don't even realize.
Yeah, sure. Howard, Deirdre, any comments?
Any concerns about young drivers who we try to challenge, how fast they think they're going?
I actually talked with Jared, and he said there's ones that say "too fast" instead of the speed. So that would be ideal for that. Yeah.
At least we have a record of it, we can go back and say, and then we need a picture. That'll be the next thing. Howard, any comments?
No, I drive very slowly, I don't record anything.
You actually stopped at the corner and turned around Church Street the other day. Anyway, that's another topic. Okay, any other questions for Officer Kelly? Thank you very much.
I just have one comment. Sergeant Witt asked me to remind Leslie and Buffy that they need to come for a ride-along, so...
Oh, your ride-along, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have any comments on the modernization plan? I assume not at this point.
Oh, you?
I don't, but...
No, I don't think you did, no.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay, Bob, highway? Thanks, Officer Kelly.
Does anybody know where the Bennett Condo meeting is? These people are here for the Bennett Condo meeting.
No idea.
I would imagine it Bennett.
No, we've got the firehouse. Guarantee you that.
No, they don't have any meetings here, any...
Was that right?
Any meetings here, anyone?
Sorry about that.
I would, I... It could possibly be at the town hall, because it is, the committee itself is a town committee, so it could be, could be there. And that's...
You should, it is.
They have a community room.
They do have a meeting room.
The condos have a community room, so I would think that they might be there.
Okay, Bob, highway?
Yes, okay. Well, we picked up the second Monday of the month brush, and on, in August, that'll happen again, and in September, that'll happen again. Removed down trees on Nine Partners, Exmoor Lane, Maple Avenue, and at the water plant. The one on Exmoor Lane fell the day after we paved it. We continued weed killing. We milled and paved Cullen Lane, Bennett Commons, and Exmoor Lane. Like to thank the police for their help with some traffic, and also the Town of Washington with helping us remove the millings to be recycled by them. We dug a drainage ditch on Exmoor Lane in coordination with the paving. Cleared out a drainage ditch on Bennett Commons and 343. Mowed and trimmed all properties, repainted the firehouse guidelines. Trimmed trees on Exmoor Lane. serviced the skag mowers. Painted the newly installed village hall front door. Filled dog stations. Picked up the village garbage, and picked up and installed a new catch basin frame and grate on Bennett Commons, again in coordination with the paving. It's been an ongoing brush season with all the damage from the storms, so, and we will continue to pick up any damage from the storms, but like I said, the next brush pickup will be August, the second Monday in August.
Okay, good. The garbage cans, so you and I were talking about how we're going to go around and just put, hook the locks on those cans?
Yeah, we need to, I think you guys, I think we need to send a letter from the board to the refuse company and tell them that they're just not doing the job.
Let me do that.
I've called them several times, and he says, "I'll talk to the drivers, and the next week we're locking them again." So it's kind of defeating the purpose of spending that money on the...
I have to walk gently though, because they did agree to do the second pickup every week without charges anymore.
He's pretty reasonable, but...
Yeah, okay. Also, the can down by the bus stop doesn't have a lock. Do we have extra locks?
We do, but not, well, not that they're keyed for them.
I think Scott gave us those, I think they got, Welsh gave us those locks.
Yeah, he can give us extra locks.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a problem, he'll drop.
Okay. All right, fine, just one.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Well, we should probably get a couple.
So the idea is that we're going to have to insist on, as soon as they're emptied, to put the locks on, so people can't lift the lids and put trash in.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
My ongoing fight with litter in the village, and I am beside myself, but, anyway. Okay, what about streetlights?
Uh, streetlights, I spoke to Mike today, he's going to get us the person that, again, I think a letter needs to come from the board.
How about a phone call? I'd rather call somebody to actually get a person.
Okay, well, yeah, he was going to get me the person contact.
Okay.
So if we can make a, make a request from the mayor, from the board, it might hold a little bit more water than...
Okay, fine, we'll try that.
A citizen who's making money off doing it, so...
Yeah. Yeah, we're just very frustrated with what, you know, their inability to help us out here. And the streetlights continue to be not working, okay?
It's, and Mike's frustrated also, I mean, he'd like to get the job done and over with.
Sure.
But to just go digging where we don't know...
And this is, you know, we've got the three that went out all at once. That's where we need to tell them where the line went.
Exactly, well, they need to tell us.
But the one in front of the fox and the hare, I thought that was one where he thought he could dig between the sidewalk and the street and find the box.
Uh, he can, but if we're going to get Central Hudson out, we might as well find out exactly where, where the break is, so it could be on one side or the other, it could be a little further down. Normally, they're right by the light.
Okay. Fine. So before we talk about the request for special marking of parking, any questions or comments about Bob's report so far?
I don't have any other comments. I did see that Kevin had his, was, I think had a comment that he wanted to make at some point, but I...
All right, good, well, let's ask Leslie first, any comments, sir? Okay, from the audience, anybody?
I'm sorry, going back to church events, I was speaking to one of the property owners in the village. They said that the tenants do not know that they're now, that they're trashing their church. You put it out in the water bill, the newsletter, the tenants do not receive a water bill, so you need to contact the tenants on that as well.
Isn't there a plaque on top of the garbage pile?
Yeah, the water bill does say, "Please pass the messages on to their tenants."
And they don't.
Plus, there's a sign on top of every can that says... I'll tell you what, I'll take the day shift, you take the night shift, we'll do 24/7 coverage, and we'll find out what... I'm open for suggestions.
A lot of the garbage...
And that's where we're headed, Kevin, between you and I, okay?
A lot of the garbage is people who are...
Okay.
Open them up.
Yeah, I know, okay. I'll tell you this, the answer is not more garbage cans, because that means more garbage.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay. Let's talk about this request from the MBA to have 10-minute parking only for two spots the side of the deli on Church Street, and a request from the owner of Julian to have two spots outside of their business, 10-minute parking only, and also a request from LeBeau to have two spots?
I think they need three. The deli is actually asking for three spots, not two, you all mentioned.
Yeah.
You said it only two.
If it's a 20-foot-long spot, I mean, we looked at those heady cap spots in front of the village hall, they didn't look like 20 feet to me. But if it's 20 feet per spot, we're halfway down that white fence by then, from the yellow, from the yellow marking down towards Nutches, okay? So there's only two spots that fit there, and I'm going to start with two, just to start this thing going. Yeah, and I just want to do two, just... Okay, let's, let's start with two. I don't want any parallel parking going on, we've got to fit into three, and it's within 10 minutes, it's taking 10 minutes to get in, anyway. And the request also is for two spots to be no parking in front of Nutches. I'm saying two, you want three?
LeBeau.
Oh, LeBeau, I mean, LeBeau. Now, LeBeau is because of...
They actually could be three spots, because they have an opening...
Okay, so they're talking about going from the alleyway back to the...
A little bit past their building into the fence, but three spots.
Well, that's basically going to the spots for the deli.
No, no, there's, you could, you could fit six cars easily between the yellow and the alleyway.
You think so?
Fit, say that again?
He's saying that LeBeau needs three spots. What we're trying to do for LeBeau is, in lieu of having to put out cones every day, which is a problem for them, because when they're not there, like in the middle of the night, someone goes and parks there and doesn't come back and get their car till the next day, they have a problem with putting the cones there, all right? So they want to be able to say, "Those spots are no parking during their working hours." Okay, right?
Yes, and...
Yeah. In which case, you know, if they're marked, then we can go and ask them to move with some level of credibility. All right?
And they want them so that their customers can park there?
No, no, so that therefore they can have that no parking, so they can then have people on the sidewalk. So the idea is that the, the customers are eating on the sidewalk, and the no parking area is for pedestrians to be able to walk around that. Walk, you know, from the sidewalk down the street to the no parking area to back up on the sidewalk.
If we allow parking where the, where the people are eating, then the people who, if they have a passenger in the car, cannot open up their door with a table right there, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah.
And you have to have, you have to have an area for people to walk down the sidewalk, so...
So first off, what about the two spots in each location in front of Julian's and to the side of the deli for 10-minute parking only? What do you think about that?
I think it's a good solution. I've had multiple people come to me and say that they're, that they come to the village and they want to continue coming to the village, but parking is impossible, especially in that part of town. So if we could have a 10-minute space, especially considering the fact that at the present time, the deli, the deli and Julian's is no eating inside, so the only traffic they're getting is, is pickup, so it makes sense that they be able to do that.
Okay. Leslie?
In theory, it sounds like a good idea. I'm concerned, though, that, so we're going to shift these cars that are parking there into other spots, and then is this going to start a precedent for all these other businesses asking for spots? I don't know if you would know that, but are like, are we going to end up sectioning off all of Franklin for spots?
Okay, so Franklin is, is, uh, untouchable, because that's a state road.
So it's only the church, okay.
It's a state road, so we're only talking about the side roads.
Okay.
All right. And, and you're right, it could open up Pandora's Box as far as everyone wants to have spaces in front of their business. We just have to recognize what we're trying to do, which is for Julian's and for the deli, make it available for the, for their customers to have easy, you know, drop off and pickup, right? And by the way, the two spots at the deli would also be available for any pickup for Barbrows, any pickup for Babats, whatever. It's just that they're right next to the deli, all right?
Okay, so it wouldn't just be for the deli?
No, it's not just for them.
It'd just be 10-minute parking?
Right.
Okay.
Right. But it would not, it would only be for those off of, off of Franklin Avenue, okay? So we're okay with that? So Bob, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you could, and, and I guess we had a discussion about do we put signs up or do you park, or do you, do you paint the lanes? And I think your preference was to paint it in the lanes.
Well, I think that's... Sidewalk. We can't put signs on the sidewalk.
Okay, fine. Okay, so that'll be the idea, we, we paint it?
And we're just asking for temporary, during the governor assignment, what are your extension to outdoor dining?
Okay, so we're only talking about the 10-minute parking, which I think is permanent. Like, the deli's gonna want 10-minute parking all the time. Julian's is gonna want 10-minute parking all the time, right?
Okay, make it permanent.
Well, that would be permanent. And by the way, uh, between now and when we update the local law, it's, um, not enforceable, right? And so we will work on updating the local law in the future. We'll get around to that code. So we're okay with doing that?
Well, and also, if we're making it, it's 24-hour no parking in front of LeBeau's?
Um, no, it's gonna be during their work hours, right?
We were, we were looking for 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thursday through Monday.
That takes too much paint.
Yeah, I can't put that on a, can't put that on a sign.
Could that be like a removable sign? Treat them differently? Because the 10-minute parking is gonna stay, but the LeBeau's outside is not, it's only gonna be seasonal.
I think the town, I think a temporary...
24 hours, we'll just make it permanent.
I know, sir.
We, we were looking for, you know, if they're not open on Monday and Tuesday, that people who park there, they're gonna change.
All right, so what, what's the board think about the concept?
We're needing to be, uh...
Say, Kevin?
We're needing to go back to be to write down, you know, Thursday through Monday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I don't think they're gonna see all of that as they're pulling into the space, literally.
Well, you, you, you would have to put a, you spot mark off, spots, and then write it three times.
The concept is fine with me. A temporary sign with a cone might be more effective in terms of making sure people understand what the space is for, uh...
Somebody has to take that in and out.
Well, it should be the owner, the business owner.
Or we're willing to go back to pretty jersey barriers and spend in the, it's very expensive to do, and that's why we're going this...
Well, I would, I would rather see a cone with a sign.
Yeah, okay.
Anything, anything like a barrier. It's just safer. Well, that can be done, too.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna continue our vehicular traffic going up and down that street, putting a jersey barrier in front there is, is, is a, is an accident waiting to happen that's on, if it's unnecessary. I know what you're saying. It's, we have to come up with a better solution because of the, the street's not all that wide to begin with. We start putting in...
And that's why we thought the better solution was mark off three spots, then in three spots, write, "No parking Thursday through Monday, 11:00 a.m."
Can you do that?
Um, a sign or a...
No, mark in, in the road.
Yeah, it'll, it'll just be a very big stencil.
Can you just do that across all three spaces? Like, you know, just do it once? In other words, not, I don't want three different statements of no parking, whatever it is. Just one statement across the three spaces. Can you do that?
Uh, I don't know how you would, I mean, it'd have to be, it'd have to enco, it'd have to encompass all three st...
Yeah, it'd be something like this. It'd be just, you're, you're painting, you know, that, here's, here's the sidewalk. You'd paint that, and then you write in here once, and this is three spaces. Across three spaces, you just write once.
Well, you're gonna, the, the stencil is going to be then about 15, 20 feet long. It's gotta be a stencil. We can't handwrite it.
I know, you're gonna handwrite it, yeah.
It's, it's gonna have to be...
Well, the, the stencil, it doesn't have to go across the whole way, just, you know, he's got a whole paragraph he wants to write on here, so why...
Maybe you should have a smaller stencil and just put it down three times, because it may have a stencil 60 feet long.
Yeah, because I think that's, that's really the only kind of stencil we'll be able to do.
Is what?
Is a smaller one. I don't, because if we had to go, you're talking, how many spaces?
Three.
All right, that's approximately 60 feet.
Although, I do wanna go with you, down with you again, and measure to see just what three spaces is. You know, because, again, 20 feet, foot of space, that's a lot of real estate.
Those three spaces, any of that go with the...
The Nutches?
No, no, can't go in the Nutches.
It goes from the yellow, yellow line at next to the alleyway, uh, down, I think, to the second post on the fence.
Yeah, it can't, it can't go past the alleyway. So it comes from the alleyway, it goes from the alleyway towards the deli.
Yes, but it's gonna be off the alleyway because there's a yellow...
Yes. Louis, so it's gotta be between the alleyway and the yellow line at the alleyway, towards the deli.
Towards the deli, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll measure it and, uh...
But I want you to look at it and see how many spaces it is, how much, how much feet it is. And then, can you see what it would take to paint that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you will go and do the four spaces, the two spaces here and the two spaces of the deli. Done deal. And you'll go look at the, at the spacing for the spaces in front of LeBeau and see what that would take.
Yeah, we just have to order up the stencils.
Yeah, okay. How much does that cost? Okay. Okay, I'd like to know the cost, and I wanna talk to Kevin. I want the M B A or LeBeau to help us out on the cost of this thing, if it's expensive. Oh, good. Really?
I don't, I don't have a clue what...
Yeah, okay, fine, we'll find out. Okay, good. Okay, so you'll look in that, let me know. Any other questions for Bob?
No. Do you want, do you need a motion for an, and, and, and a...
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion that we have Bob go off and mark the four spaces, two in front of Julian's, two in front of, to the side of the deli, as 10-minute parking only.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the second motion, we'll hold off. Bob's gonna go do a sizing and what would it be to do the painting in front of the, uh, LeBeau's.
So we'll have to wait another month.
Um, sure we do not?
What's that?
I, I, I think, I think whatever space we have in terms of going in front of LeBeau's, we should try to do, uh, add a motion tonight, and we'll worry about how we get this, the posting of it done in the next three weeks.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that Bob go off and size what we've required to put no parking signs in specific hours in front of LeBeau. Let us know what the cost impact or doability of, is, and if it's okay to him as well as, uh, me, that he will proceed and do it.
I'll second.
Yeah.
We're not doing, uh, temporary signs because the business would have to put it out, and that's what they're trying to avoid, because that's the purpose?
Yeah, we're trying to avoid that, just because, you know, if somebody comes and parks at 10 o'clock at night, you know...
Because they got the cars are already there and they got the...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the, that's the complicating factor there. So I made a motion. Can I get a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, good, thanks. Okay, Bob?
Um, I think that's...
You got anything else? The tree committee, you wanna do the tree committee?
Uh, we'll do that at the end, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it.
Great, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, water and sewer. Scott's on vacation. Good for Scott. Oh, by the way, Bob, you got all these nice pictures in there of Collin Lane.
The pictures on the, on the back are, uh, the former, yeah, the pictures of, uh, Collin Lane and, uh, Bennett Commons and Exmoor, which, uh, very effective in what we want to do.
Right, as far as drainage, yeah.
As far as drainage and, uh, visibility, if you like.
And addressing the issue that Colonel Hayes has, with, with getting up and down Exmoor Lane. Right.
And you did trimming along Exmoor as well, in terms of tree trimming...
They had to.
To make sure that they weren't getting hit by branches as well.
Yeah, well, that, in order for the equipment to come down, that whole thing happened to be trimmed, but one tree falling.
Just trying to give credit where credit's due, that's...
Now, just as far as funding, just let you know, uh, we have $166,000 chips funding right now. We spent, uh, $33,000 for Collin Lane, uh, $66,000 for Bennett Commons and Exmoor, right? That's 100 grand. Leaves us about $66,000 left. We're gonna use, um, chips money to buy the, uh, snowplow for the sidewalks, which is gonna be about 20 grand, right? Because it's like 22, and we're gonna get, um, trade-in value.
Yeah, we have trade-in.
So that's about 20. You're gonna use, you're gonna use $5,500 to buy the new plow for the truck, right? And so that leaves us with about $40,000 left of chips money, all right? Um, I'm looking to spend that money on other paving, supplement it with money we get maybe from the Res, American Rescue Plan. So you have to wait to see what that money's gonna look like, but I would like to see some more paving done this year, all right? It may be getting late, but as soon as we know what the finances look like, I wanna go back. I know you've gotten quotes from Peckham for additional roads, and if we find the wherewithal to fund it, I wanna go forward and do that, okay?
And if we can't, if they can't do it this year, then I'd like to preserve that money for next year.
Of course, it's not gonna go anywhere.
Not that it's the next target.
That's right.
And then you need to chip steel, um, not the corners, and then the money.
Well, you should use your, um, highway money in your budget for chip sealing, right?
Yeah, that, that, that...
Okay, so if you're planning to do that, you should use that money now or whenever, right? Or you wanna do it next year?
Yeah, it's...
Fine, okay. Sure. Okay, Bob, thanks a lot. All right, let's move on to the monthly water report. So Scott's not, not here. You can see in June, uh, produced 5.8 million gallons, average flow 192,000, peak flow was 261,000. Thanks, Kevin.
Good night.
Safety results were all negative. Uh, there's a pressure issue on Alden Place. They found a partially closed valve. When they opened the valve up, the pressure came back to normal. Glad to see that. The Town of Washington came and fixed the driveway at the water plant. I guess that was the stone...
I'm sorry, say that again?
The Town of Washington came and fixed the driveway at the water plant?
Yeah, they have a great, uh, I mean, we talked to Bill Bright on this. When the company left, they left stones all over.
Yeah.
Grab big stones on, and we hit it already a couple times, so...
When you're cutting the grass.
And they have a great, they pulled the stones out, but we also spoke to Bill Bright, and he said he was under the impression that the job was done, and it wasn't. So he's trying to get that company back before they're paid to redo the driveway and clear out.
So this is on top of what the Town of Washington did? Oh, okay, all right.
He was, he was unaware, but we were just speaking with him, so they had something they didn't do that, you know, the, the...
Okay, so it's part of the contract?
They haven't been paid yet, so...
All right.
And they don't know what they're...
That's Milne's, I guess.
That's Milne's, yeah.
All right. Okay, fine. There was a water leak on Old Route 82, uh, on a 1-inch service line. They replaced the damaged section of pipe pretty quickly, as a matter of fact, within like three hours. Again, V R I hopped on that. Thanks for their support. They put a new 8-inch water main valve on the, on the line off of Carroll Boulevard, which is the, the road that goes up towards the condos from Franklin Avenue. And they read all water millimeters, and the bills went out. And the next chart is just the, was it like a two-year trend? Which shows that, you know, water produced in June was, uh, significantly less than it was a year ago. Any questions about the water report? Anybody in the audience have a comment? No? So sewer, performed all monthly sampling and maintenance. The data is there, shows that everything is, uh, in spec. There was an E P A inspection that was done. He says it all went well. They're gonna get a letter and report forthcoming from the E P A. There was, they flushed the sewer main in Millbrook Hollow due to sewer odors and installed inflow protector covers and two manholes. And their plan is to flush all the mains during the annual cleaning this year. And the next chart is just the, uh, monthly chart, trend of, uh, actual flow, average flow, and then the precipitation. I'm assuming the precipitation's gonna jump up quite a bit for next month's report. Any questions about the sewer report? Anybody? Mike?
No, I'm good. I was just looking at the charts, that's all.
Oh, sure. Okay, treasure report. Sarah? So we've already done the first thing. We've closed the fiscal year.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for the month of June, I'm gonna read from the four top accounts. We have the tax count ending on June 31st, 2021, General fund, $228,113.13. Water fund, $74,875.93. And the sewer fund, $45,231.19. So you all should see the monthly, the operating statements. Uh, you've got... Which we've already gone over. Um, Tim mentioned we're gonna start doing that A U D now that we can close that year. Bills. So we could, um, taxes are underway, so to date, we've collected $1,016,000, uh, $16,591.35. So we've collected 93.72% of the taxes. And the, for the unpaids, we have $68,022.63, so we're still looking for 6.27%. For the town S B A, we've collected $4,833.88.
How does that compare to expected town S B, S B A?
Um, it's pretty much on track.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm surprised at how high the percentage of taxes collected already. Is that typical? Are you happy with that?
Yeah, yeah, most people pay June.
Oh, good, all right.
So, because it goes up 5%.
All right. So on your report, your matrix of data here, the Bedrock Well account has 40, almost $48,000 in it still.
Yes.
Does that include the $19,000 from Dutchess County? We still haven't gotten that?
No, I, I reached out to Delaware, maybe like a week ago, and they said they haven't heard anything, but we've submitted everything, so I don't...
We have, all right. So there's nobody we can call or any button, button we can push?
Um, I don't know much about that grant, so I don't have any contacts.
I think in order to try to get closure on that, you're gonna have to get through to the Dutchess County Planning Department and, and be able to, uh, find out who's got the paperwork on that, because that's where it's gonna go through.
Do you know anybody that you can call, contact there?
I can try. I can, I...
So first off, it's not a big, right, you know, crisis, because we've got plenty of money in there, but I, I want my 19, our 19,000.
Right.
And I don't want them to forget about it. So if you make a phone call and see... So I've seen emails from Sarah, between Sarah and Delaware, saying, you know, that here's all the stuff you need.
Mm-hmm.
Where's my money, that kind of thing. So we're still waiting for the money. So Mike, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try. I do have someone in the planning department I know I can call.
Oh, good.
But I'm not sure if they'll have the answer for me. They'll...
It's worth a shot.
Thanks.
Oh, good.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Deirdre. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go down through the, uh, the table. Uh, let's see here. The police vehicle fund, there's 14,000 there. That's left over for the, um, is that for the, uh, the, figure up all the lights and stuff?
Yes.
Okay, good. So those, uh, entries that are in the operating statement will get moved, will get paid by this money here?
Yeah, you'll see it in the July.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the operating report shows equipment, uh, for the police at about, I'm gonna say 11,000, something like that, which is the cost of putting lights on, putting on whatever, of the police stuff, you know, making a police car. And so that money is really gonna be paid for by the bond that we got from the bank. So it'll, it'll come out of the operating expense to be paid for this line item right here. I'll just so you know that. Um, what else? Tennis courts. That number looks low. Is it still 21,000, I thought?
It's for June.
I'm sorry?
It's, this one's for June, so it's like 23,000.
Oh, okay, so we have more based on what happened, uh, month to date, okay.
Correct.
And you said you think, off the top, you had somewhere on 23 right now?
I think it's on one of the charts.
Oh, okay, fine, we'll see it in a minute.
Yeah, I don't know if it's how I had.
And the tree replacement program, the $7,600 there, Mike, that's something that we, um, have available for trees?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, because, because generally, we replace trees under the shade tree account line, and that's not, they're not the same thing. So that's something we, I'll have to look at and find out.
I'd like to see if you can use that money first, before you use what's budgeted.
Okay.
I think that money is actually more than what we had budgeted, so...
We budgeted 2,500 for the shade tree, and that's, that's been a, you know, that's what we've been doing for recent, recent memory. But that, that may very well be part of, part of these, uh, grants or something that we got eons ago, and we haven't used the money.
Okay, well, let's use that money. I'd like to use that before we use our budget of money, okay?
Okay.
All right, good. Anything else, Sarah?
That's all I have for treasury.
Okay, let's move on.
So for building department, we've collected in the month of June, 14, um, $1,480. Um, we issued four building permits, five certificate of occupancies, and two certificate of compliances, and four municipal searches. For planning board and zoning board, uh, the planning board will have a meeting on the 20th of this month, and the general will be posted as to why, and Z B A, I have no meeting scheduled.
Okay, and I sent an email to both, uh, Matt and to Andy, chairs, persons of the respective P V A and Z B A, telling them that they also have to start having meetings in person.
Right.
That you can no longer do Zoom. The public has to have the opportunity to attend. And, uh, I think those are small enough. They, they probably could still go to the village hall. Yeah, but I haven't heard back from them yet, so, um, I'm assuming they will follow up.
And if Andy gets back to you, he still has not done his own progress.
Yes. Well, if he goes to a meeting, we'll have to corner him.
That's right. I'll fire him.
Okay, good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Um, uh, what about the, the resolution for the escrow?
Yes.
Should we do that now?
We can do that now.
Why not?
Yes.
So tell us, give us the background of this.
So we have an escrow account... On my bank account that it basically holds escrow for projects. On my bank account that it basically holds escrow for projects that occur in the village for properties. And so Karen and I, she's our senior account clerk, we went through all the records and we can't seem to find what the overage is for that. So we're petitioning the board to move that overage into the general fund.
It's about $2,300.
About $2,300.
And so do you understand what she's saying? That there's money that's in the escrow account that has been long past, you know, submitted and not reimbursed to anyone. And no one's come asking for it. So the request is just to get it out of there and move it over to the general fund. Does that make sense?
And this this is not through the planning department or something else that that, you know, just got put in the wrong place?
No. Let's say that it's been there for years and years and years. Okay? As a matter of fact, she can find no records of how it got there.
No.
So this is just kind of cleaning up business. Any comments about that? Any problems? Mike?
No, as long as we have the paperwork in case something shows up after we do it.
You're a glass half-empty kind of a guy.
Yeah, well.
Therefore, I'm going to read this resolution, and then I'd like you to do a poll of the trustees. Okay?
Sarah, let me just grab.
Yes. Those of you who are counting, this is one of seven resolutions for tonight. Ready? Village of Millbrook Board of Trustees, Resolution 2021-014, July 14, 2021. At a duly convened meeting of the Village of Millbrook Board of Trustees, the board reviewed the following. Whereas research was conducted and no records were found to identify the